Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, June 8, 2020. Prior to our call to order in our roll call, I would like to let anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any item on tonight's agenda, or for that matter, any item not on the agenda, to please give that speaker request form, they're found in the back of the room, to our executive assistant Ruth Scott, and Ruth is filling in tonight for Lynn Fazekas, our city clerk, who is not feeling well this evening. So if you do that, we'll get you on at the appropriate time. With that, I'd ask Ruth Scott to call the roll, please.
Morris?
Here.
Finnoukin?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Jeff, have you put that picture up? There she is. Okay. Peggy Hoyt recently passed away at the ripe old age of 92. Eight, yeah, 92. We knew her as Peggy. We knew her as Peggy, and she served this city as its city clerk from 1977 through 1997. She and her husband, before she moved into town, farmed out south of town, and she was beloved by so many folks here in town after she retired in 97. She kept very, very active in a number of things. Now, she and I were both lecturers at St. Mary's Church, and she was a very, a great, a lady of great faith. During her, the latter years of her life, she befriended our city clerk Lynn Fazekas, and they had a very, very special relationship, as Peggy spent the remaining years of her life at Barb City Manor. She cared so much about that, about that institution. So if you'd please stand, we'll have a moment of silence for Peggy Hoyt, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and with the permission of Alderman Smith and Alderman McAdams, who are six feet from me, and Greg Perkins in front of me here, I'd like to take off this mask, if I may. It's much easier to get through this meeting with that. Done. So, our first item on the agenda tonight is approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda as printed? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve, please. So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Morris, that we approve tonight's agenda. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Finnoukin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
That agenda is approved as printed. Now we come to the item in our agenda that we have public participation. I have one letter that has been sent, and then we also have one person who would like to speak. Shannon, would you like to do that when we hit the item on the agenda, or do you want to do that early on? Item on the agenda? Okay, great. Well, so we'll wait on that. So, let me begin then with reading this first letter that we have. This is a letter from Tony Verbic, from the Third Ward. There is currently evidence to show that Occupational Safety and Health Administration, OSHA regulations, are being violated by the cloth face masks being recommended by local health officials. On the OSHA government website is a document titled Clarification of OSHA's Requirement for Breathing Air to Have at Least 19.5% Oxygen Content, describing the Respiratory Protection Standard 29 CFR 1910-134, and from that document, quote, "Human beings must breathe oxygen to survive and begin to suffer adverse health effects when the oxygen level of their breathing, breathing air drops below 19.5% oxygen. Below 19.5% oxygen, air is considered oxygen deficient. At concentrations of 16 to 19.5%, workers engaged in any form of exertion can rapidly become symptomatic as their tissues fail to obtain the oxygen necessary to function properly. At oxygen levels of 10 to 14%, faulty judgment, intermittent respiration, and exhaustion can be expected even with minimal exertion. The rulemaking record for the Respiratory Protection Standard clearly justifies adopting the requirement that air breathed by employees must have an oxygen content of at least 19.5%. A lesser concentration of oxygen in employees' breathing air could endanger them physiologically and diminish their ability to cope with other hazards that may be present in the workplace", unquote. According to a recent report measuring the oxygen reduction with an oxygen deficiency monitor, a cloth face mask will reduce the oxygen level of breathing air to less than 18%. If this information is accurate, any local business or local official that requires someone to wear a face mask, either as a patron or employee, is violating OSHA regulations. City Council needs to investigate this issue independently of the DeKalb County Health Department to either confirm or deny such a violation exists. Oxygen deficiency monitors are available for purchase, and local construction contractors are likely to have this type of device as well. Finally, I would like to talk briefly about the construction activity near DeKalb High School. White Trucks labeled Dynamic Utility Solutions near the DeKalb High School would indicate groundwork preparation for 5G fifth-generation wireless technology deployment. On their website, one of the services they provide is listed as smart grid installation. Let me remind the city council that the city of DeKalb has no liability insurance for electromagnetic radiation as described in a FOIA document titled Cyber Exclusions. In a congressional hearing on February 6, 2019, Senator Richard Blumenthal from Connecticut questioned wireless industry representatives about any up-to-date wireless safety studies, and it has been confirmed that no safety studies exist for this wireless technology deployment. You can find more information about this on my website at dekalbeemf.com. That's D-E-K-A-L-B-E as in Edward, M. and as in mother, F as in Frank, dot com. Thank you, Mayor, and City Council for your time. Signed, Tony Verbic. There are no other folks who would like to speak tonight, other than Shannon, who will do that when we get to that item on the agenda. So we move right along to item E, presentations. There are none tonight. F, appointments. There are none tonight. Number G, consent agenda. All items listed on this consent agenda will be enacted by one motion unless one of the items is requested to be deleted by a council member. I see no one desiring to do that, so I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which reads as follows. Number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of May 26, 2020. Number two, accounts payable and payroll through June 8, 2020, in the amount of $1,649,599.09. And finally, Resolution 2020-052 Designating Assistant Human Resources Director Michelle Anderson as the Authorized Agent of the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, IMRF, for the city of DeKalb. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Finnoukin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yeah.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
The consent agenda is approved as presented. Number H, we now go to public hearings, and we do have two public hearings tonight. I will open this public hearing at 6:12, Rebuild Illinois Regional Economic Development, that's R-I-R-E-D, project grant. And I'm told it is required that I read the entire document provided prior to getting any further information or testimony in this public hearing. Public hearing minutes. This public hearing is taking place in the city of DeKalb City Hall. The state has allocated $16,500,000 in Rebuild Illinois funds to the Competitive Regional Economic Development, R-I-R-E-D, component. A grant ceiling of $2 million per project has been established. Grants for less than $250,000 will not be awarded. The governor's five-year economic development plan recognizes the importance of regional economic development as a strategy to create sustainable and resilient growth. The objective of this program is to provide grants to strengthen local economies and encourage the development of industry clusters. The city of DeKalb intends to apply to the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for a grant from the Rebuild Illinois program. These grant funds are to be used for a community development project that will include the following activities: For the construction of a new road to maintain easy access to a regional commercial attraction and support the agricultural business of DeKalb's heritage in the near future. Additionally, the new road will be terrifically positioned to aid in the longer-term economic development of the region as the data center and recently established neighboring food company facility that continue to elevate economic interest in the region. The total amount of Rebuild Illinois Regional Economic Development grant funds, grant funds to be requested is by the city of DeKalb is $741,381.71. The city of DeKalb also proposes to expend $247,127.24 in non-Rebuild Illinois funds on the project. These non-Rebuild Illinois funds will be derived from the following sources: the city's state capital improvement bonds. Both the rebuild and non-rebuild Illinois funds will be used for the construction of this new road. The consolidation of a contiguous 500-acre parcel was make or break for the city of DeKalb to secure the commitment of a new data center development and its estimated $1 billion investment. The vacation and removal of an existing public rural road was necessary to accommodate this consolidation. While the reward of the new data center is great, the road network would suffer, negatively impacting commerce of both recreational and agricultural kinds in the region. A proposed new rural road is desired to maintain easy access to a regional commercial attraction and support the agricultural business of DeKalb's heritage in the near future. Additionally, the new road will be terrifically positioned to aid in the longer-term economic development of the region as the data center and recently established neighboring food company facility continue to elevate interest in the region. This rural road would be approximately a mile long, providing a two-lane, fully paved north-south connection between Gerler and Kesslinger Roads, interconnecting industrial, commercial, and agricultural areas, and laying half a mile from a major interchange with Interstate 88. Such a project requires ROW acquisition of approximately eight acres, establishment of drainage ditches, and aggregate roadbed, and hot mix asphalt paving. While the data center does not utilize the new rural road for its primary access, it is important to appreciate that without this pledged reconfiguration of the local transit network, the DeKalb region would not have qualified to host the now-secured transformative Illinois data center development. The city of DeKalb is requesting this grant funding because they are unable to fund this vital economic development-related infrastructure project on their own. With limited surplus funds, it would be imprudent to allocate all of the city's financial assets to the project. The city is ready to move forward with this project immediately. They just need financial assistance to make it happen. The proposed project will not displace any residents or businesses in the project area or within the city of DeKalb. The city of DeKalb's detailed prioritized list of community development and housing needs include the following. Facilitate a business-friendly environment that supports existing merchants while attracting new investment to areas in need of commercial development. Promote and encourage local business collaboration. Foster local entrepreneurship and business development and sustainability. Develop retention and recruitment strategies to complement the existing commercial mix and leverage existing resources throughout the city. Number two, create an attractive climate for commercial and industrial development, investment. Ensure DeKalb's business regulatory infrastructure reflects best practice. Upgrade DeKalb's building stock and structural profile. Leverage DeKalb's workforce, educational, and locational assets, i.e. highways, rail, airport, broadband, of available commercial and industrial space, educated and skilled workforce. And enhance the value, appearance, and vitality of the city's neighborhoods. Thirdly, position downtown DeKalb for long-term success. Develop resources to assist business startup and growth. Align downtown parking to community needs. Improve the pedestrian and aesthetic environment of downtown. Evaluate emerging public space technology trends and construct the infrastructure necessary to support them. Support enterprises that enhance the vitality of the downtown. Fourthly, bridge NIU and the city wherever feasible to create a mutually beneficial environment. Five, conserve, protect, and enhance DeKalb's natural resources. And finally, develop and promote cultural, social, educational, and recreational activities that appeal to a wide range of interests and age groups. With that, is there anyone from the public who would like to present to this item? Before I turn it over to our city manager, Nicholas. City manager Nicholas, are there any items that you would like to present?
I don't think there's anything under the sun that I could add to that. You'll be happy to know I have nothing to add.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this item? If not, I would like to close this public hearing at 6:21. I'd like to know what my oxygen level is right now.
Take a drink, Jerry. Take a drink.
Okay. We have one other public hearing. I'd like to open this public hearing at 6:22. And this is number two, Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for Program Year 2019. That's April 1, 2019, March to March 31, 2020. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to this item? City manager Nicholas, please.
Just say that there's a considerably larger body of information that is available on this topic, and it's not exhausted by the background for the public hearing. The executive summary for this is in, is attached to the agenda, and I hope people will take a minute and read that if they haven't already. I want to also thank Jan Rouse, who's our community services coordinator, for all of her work in preparing this and presenting it to us tonight.
Thank you. Hearing no one else who would like to speak this item, I would like to close this public hearing at 6:23. Moving right along in our agenda, item I, considerations. There are no considerations. Additional considerations tonight. We'll move along to resolutions. Resolution 20, excuse me, 2020-053, authorizing a real estate purchase agreement and the sale of real estate, a real property located at 1101 North First Street, and that's PIN 08-14-305-018, in the amount of $75,000. Motion, please. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finnoukin, seconded by Alderman Favor. City manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you. This will look somewhat familiar, it was back in September of last year. By the way, there's a typo in the background. It's September 23, 2019, that the council agreed to sell this property to Kumar Shodri in the amount of $80,000, and subsequent to that, the council also, on the advice of our city attorney, reviewed and approved an agreement dealing with environmental matters, and that was executed by Mr. Shodri. And despite our best efforts to get him to a closing, over three months, we never got there. And so he was in default of the agreement. The property went back on the market. We have a new buyer, and he has offered $75,000, has paid $5,000 already in earnest money, and we believe that he will get to closing, the professionals that he has representing him, and we urge you to approve this this evening.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Finnoukin?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
That resolution is approved as presented. Thank you. Number two, Resolution 2020-054, authorizing an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation, Division of Aeronautics, for rehabilitation of the entrance road, parking lot, and teehanger pavement at the DeKalb-Taylor Municipal Airport as it pertains to extending the expiration date to August 14, 2022, and that's DKB-4431. Motion, please. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Finnoukin. Any...
Alderman Perkins. Alderman Perkins, second.
Okay. Alderman Perkins, did you have a comment?
No.
Oh, you seconded that.
Yeah.
I see. Okay. So that last motion was made by Alderman Favor. It was diligently seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any discussion? City manager Nicholas, please.
This is just a housekeeping matter. The work has been done. Division of Aeronautics wants a little more time to close it out. I don't think there's anything lacking on our side in terms of paperwork that's been submitted. But as you can see, we're up on their deadline, and so rather than add a couple months, they've added three years. I'd be able to get it done in that amount of time.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yeah.
Morris?
Yes.
Finnoukin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
That resolution is approved as presented. Number three, Resolution 2020-055, authorizing a license agreement with Meyer Incorporated for the use of store premises, that's at 541 Purry Parkway in Sycamore, for the provision of public transit service. I'd entertain a motion, please. So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Finnoukin, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager Nicholas, please.
As I said in the background, this is rather curious on the face of it, but makes sense. Our transit system reaches Sycamore, obviously, and specifically, there is a fixed route that gets to the Meyer Store, where there's also a bus stop, and we have to engage in a license agreement with that, the owner of that complex. That's what this is about. We recommend your approval.
Good. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Finnoukin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Number four, Resolution 2020-056, authorizing an intergovernmental grant agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation, Aeronautics, for a CARES Act grant in the amount of $30,000 for DeKalb-Taylor Municipal Airport operations. This is Project Illinois ILL-4853. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The CARES Act, the first wave of massive federal relief, touched on the needs of the nation's airports, including our general aviation facility, and we were allocated $30,000. This money went to reimburse personnel costs for the airport manager, and also offset part of the cost of a large mower, which we've been using out there, a brand-new mower we've been using. Recommend your approval. This is an intergovernmental agreement, is what it is.
Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Finnoukin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
That resolution passes as presented. Number five, Resolution 2020-057- Number five, Resolution 2020-057, authorizing a master lease purchase agreement with tax-exempt leasing corporation for lease financing of equipment for various city departments, in the amount of $269,710. I'd entertain a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager Nicholas.
I just want to mention another typo here, I see, just a, said 269,710, it should read 296,710, just a juxtaposition of the nine and the six. But it's clear, as you read the background, that what we're doing here is something we have talked about for a couple of weeks now. As you know, that you entered an open-ended equity lease agreement with Enterprise for a lot of light-duty and medium-duty vehicles at the last regular meeting, and we talked about the possibility of being able to roll together the funding for the new ambulance, which we haven't had to come forward with yet. It's in, it's in construction now. And then also the five-yard dump truck that the council got behind at the last meeting. So that's what we've done, I'll give credit to Ray Munch. One of the last things he did on the way out the door was to put this together. He did a good job, went out, we got some proposals from a variety of companies that are involved in the heavier-duty equipment. And this tax-exempt leasing, and which you know, it's offered by a company called Tax-Exempt Leasing Corp., that does a lot of this work, and has proposed a combined package for the dump truck and the ambulance, that all things considered, over time, the total cost was lower. A couple of other places did, did offer, did participate, but didn't complete all the bid specs that we had. So we recommend an agreement with Tax-Exempt Leasing Corporation. They also have the lowest interest rate over time, the life, the projected life of the lease. And that's all I have, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any discussion? If council approves, this would be for the lease purchase of, in the amount of $296,710. Roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you, that resolution is approved. Number six, Resolution 2020-058, authorizing the commitment of a local motor fuel tax, that's MFT funds, as a local match to secure rebuild Illinois grant funds to support the establishment and construction of a new rural road connecting Gerler Road and Kesslinger Road. Roll, motion, please.
So moved.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Mayor, this is what was pointed at in that long
Public hearing.
... explanation, so we recommend your approval.
You don't need that reread, do you?
If you don't mind, and the odd money here is for healthcare for, for anybody who wants to read it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
That resolution is passed as presented. Now move on to item K on the agenda, ordinances for second reading, there are none. Number, item L, ordinances for first reading, we have several. Number one, Ordinance 2020-039, amending Chapter 51, Traffic, Section 51-20, parades, processions, and marches by adding runs, walks, and rides. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Who seconded that? Okay, it was moved by Alderman, Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager Nicholas, please.
I just want to thank our executive assistant for bringing this to our attention. She deals with a lot of the walk-in applications for a variety of things that community supports strongly during the year, and we've been just sort of finessing, saying, well, it's a run, well, that's close to a parade, or whatever. And, and when it comes to liability and what insurers look at, it's probably better to spell it out like this, that's what we're doing, nothing more than that.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
That motion is, that ordinance is approved on first reading.
Motion to waive second reading and approve?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Morris, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
That ordinance is approved. Number two, Ordinance 2020-040, amending Chapter 35, towing policy. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Morris. We have one person in our audience who would like to speak to this item, Shannon Lovett. Please come to the podium. Identify yourself, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, if you could, please. Thank you.
All right. Come on, take this down.
Please.
Shannon Lovett with Lovett's Towing. Going over some of the few of the items that we feel should be adapted or amended into Chapter 35, or possibly through the application process of towing, through our new chief, Mr. Redell. One of the items is, and I believe this was spoken to in the first reading, I apologize for not making that meeting, is that more than one towing company operating out of one location. We don't feel that there's, that one company, that one person should have a blanketed use or ability to use a special use permit for multiple companies working out of one location. They've, we've been told that there's plans for additional companies to be used out of that one location, and we feel that only one company should be working out of one, one impound. Minimal lot size requirements for the impound. There's spoken in the past with the special use permit requests of our, our new towing company in town, the size of their lots, very small. There's lots of scenarios where having vehicles crammed into a lot could cause damage, fires that reignite, unfortunately, and, and cause possible problems with that company. So we feel that there should be a requirement for a minimal lot size. I found in multiple ordinances where they have required as small as 35 minimum, up to 150 minimum. More language, no transferring or subcontracting of toes to other companies outside of our rotation, meaning, any company that is on our rotation now, taking a job that they cannot handle, and then transferring that job to somebody else outside the region, when there's somebody in the community that can take care of that job. So no transferring to anybody other than somebody that's on the rotation. Limiting, limiting our rotation to the DeKalb PD's needs. Having four, five, six towing companies on a rotation that currently, one or two towing companies can take care of it without a problem, we feel that we should have a better defined qualification and fill the needs of the PD only, not just have an open rotation where multiple towing companies can come on, multiple, you know, there's no need for it. Language in the chapter for minimum requirements for equipment, number of trucks, size of the trucks, lifting capacity of the trucks. We've called, we've been called out multiple times with the DeKalb Fire Department, helping them with heavy extractions. I feel that there's a, at least a minimum for a large, if you're going to qualify or apply for our heavy duty, there should be a minimum of 50-ton capacity of lifting.
Shannon, you're nearing four minutes, so try to wrap it up if you can.
All right. Limited the relocation licenses to a certain number, where we're not having 100 towing companies in town trying to relocate. And then remove ICC language for requiring an ICC license, but I think that's been addressed. I got word from Woody that that was possibly addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So, we have a motion and a second on the floor. We've had Mr. Lovett explain his concerns about what we have before us, and I will now ask City Manager Nicholas for any comments.
Just to say, I followed the direction from the meeting back on May 11th, with respect, primarily to the possibility of adding several different layers of review, in the event that the business was unhappy with rulings either having to do with their, their ability to be on a police tow rotation, or having to do with their relocators license, whatever the challenge might be. So that's what the focus basically is here, and be happy to answer any questions you have, but that's how the ordinance reads currently, and the changes that were made are in red type. We've had a chance to look at that, and that those, we didn't cover some of the ground that was mentioned here tonight.
So we discussed this on May 11th. What you brought back is what is in this proposed amendment to that ordinance. We have a motion to approve, and a second, any further discussion? Alderman Finuchin?
Greg was.
Alderman Perkins, and then Alderman Finuchin.
So Bill, some of the, the points that Shannon raised sound, sounded kind of logical to me. Have you guys had much dialogue on those points?
Yeah, thank you. Shannon sent some email, we've had some correspondence and calls. I can knock some of these off, and then I'm open to a suggestion from Chief Redell and our, our city attorney. John mentioned, our city attorney mentioned that maybe it was a meeting on the 11th, that with respect to the number of users per lot, when you do a special use permit, it goes with a lot, it's a zoning question, not necessarily a business question, and, and so if the council were to go in that direction, then we'd have to depart from this, the process that we've done in the past, doesn't mean that we can't, but that's, there are other communities that do have that. I think there's probably a logical extent to how far you can go. If you have two, maybe, but if you have three, four, five, and using one lot, the capacity of the lot then becomes a problem. No subcontracting toes on the rotation, that's not something that we've talked about I don't know if our license currently allows that, John, are you familiar with that, or Bob, familiar with that?
I don't know if that's in our policy or in the ordinance, but I would be against subcontracting.
And so then it would be, particularly on the tow rotation, that would be up to the chief to define that. And limiting the rotation to, to me, need, I, I understand where that's coming from, that's a business concern, a business proposition, when do you have too many, it's just like, whether we're talking about liquor licenses, or any licensing, and it's, it's a council decision as to what you think is fair in the way of competition in that regard. The ICC language has, I believe that's been cleaned up. Is that correct? I think it was. The executive assistant may know something about that, the ICC language that was a hang-up on one of the, one of the licenses, do you recall? Maybe you don't, you might not know, okay. But I believe that has been cleaned up. I think that's, that's what I know.
And there was a minimum capability.
For capacity, lifting capacity. We've never specced that out. It is true that there are times when you get a rollover of a, of a semi, and maybe some of the lighter weight that you used to see in every gas station in town, which now a lot of them are out of that business, but smaller, I don't know what their, their capacity was, but it would be obviously inadequate to deal with a bigger truck. The, now neither the department nor the council's ever set those limits.
Does that answer your questions, Alderman Perkins?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alderman Finuchin?
City Manager, so we're talking about co-occumancy of a lot. Is it a way to determine that it's actually two separate companies, or an individual has set up a company and a paper company to get a bigger bite of the tow apple here? Is there a way to, to take care of that?
There's, you know, up front, there's, there's paperwork, it has to be clean and clear. What happens at 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, people come and go, and obviously that's something we, we police has needed on complaint, mostly. We don't have the capacity to have police officers constantly, you know, patrolling those lots, but I think that you're right, that's the test of whether we have a good law or not, if we're finding a series of complaints about people having trouble getting their vehicles, or there's, there's competition over, you know, who, who had that vehicle and when. If it gets clumsy and confused, then we bring it right back to the council, and we say, let's fix this. I think we could try this, and if it doesn't work, there are some other communities east of here, in King County, that have the allowance for, for two on a lot. Just because these lots tend to take up a fair amount of room, they're generally in industrial-zoned areas, and, but they have to be, they're, they're attached to an office typically, so a person could come at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning and claim their vehicle, so there has to be some respectable front door to that. You don't always find that in, in older industrial areas, where they can find the land cheap enough to frankly establish these lots, which don't generate income except what happens when there's a car on it.
Right. But going back to the, my, my question really is, how do we determine whether it's two independently-owned towing companies sharing a lot, or it's a
Yeah.
tow company and a paper company owned by the same people?
I, I guess we'd have to do our homework, we'd have to investigate if there's any reason to suspect it's a, it's a shell for, for the same outfit. I guess we'd have to determine that on, on application.
Okay, thank you.
To tow, you still have to get the license, and to get the license, you have to run through the background, the police checks, and the criminal background, and all the rest of that. So usually that's when we find out who's the owner, who's, who are the drivers, every one of them has to be reviewed.
All right, thanks.
Alderman Verbic?
But then the landlord is accountable for this special use permit, so there's multiple companies
Mm-hmm.
operating in one tow yard. Issues arise, whatever they may be, have to be resolved by the holder of the special use permit, the landlord in this case, correct?
Yeah, this is specific to the business of towing, you know, but ultimately, you lease, you have to have some liability for what happens on your property.
Yeah, thanks.
Correct. Any other discussion or questions? So let me try to put this in a proper context. What we have before us, and it, we have a motion on the floor to approve, and a second, that we would approve these amendments to the towing policy that we discussed on May 11. we would approve these amendments to the towing policy that we discussed on May 11th. And I take it, City Manager Nicholas, obviously, that you're comfortable with the approval of the amendments that you drafted, brought forth?
I am, Mayor.
Okay.
Are there other issues that can arise or are already debating amongst the businesses involved in towing in the city of Kelb? Absolutely. That isn't what brought this matter to the council in the first place, so I stuck with what we took up, and that's what I have before you tonight.
That's where I'm going with this, is basically, we could approve this.
Doesn't mean this is the last one, Mayor.
If we have a problem in the future, we would ask anyone who may feel that we need to amend it more, we could do that.
Correct.
But does that make sense? Okay, with hearing no further discussion, then we're asked to approve this ordinance on first reading. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
No.
Smith?
No.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Six yes.
Would any member like to move to waive second reading and approve this this evening? Hearing none, it appears it will be brought back then at our next meeting.
May I ask, Mayor?
Yes.
Before we leave and go to the next agenda item, is there any information that the council would like to have before the next, if we're just carrying it over and there's nothing new that you're looking for?
Yes, even though, even-
As you know, it's been a busy time here.
Yes, I really, that's why I asked my original question before we took the vote. I know that there are some concerns, and that's why I felt that if we pass this, we could bring those back at a later time, but what you're asking now is what those folks would like to see, perhaps what predicated their no vote. I'm going to surmise that a no vote would have meant that somebody was, you're unhappy with that. Alderman Smith.
I guess, Bill, what I'm looking at is if we're going to bring it back, let's just clean it up and be done with it and put it to bed. So I guess, you know, the dual use of the lot, let's just, I'm tired of hearing it, I guess, maybe let's just get an ordinance that's solid and then move forward with it.
Well, there are four or five things that were brought here to you tonight, and I don't know that that's any less or more important than the other four, frankly, they all have some reason behind them. But also, we can't ignore the fact that there are business considerations here that are beyond the council's purview.
Right.
If you're not hurting competition, in your opinion, then we could proceed. If you feel you are, then we stop and we look at some of these other things.
What thing I'm looking at is violation of special use permit, is that?
No.
Nothing?
No. You get three or four in a lot, then it becomes, they're practical matters then, you know, a car's getting damaged, as somebody said, are they going to get damaged?
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Anybody else comment?
Well, I just, I'm taking into consideration the thoughts put forward by the Lovett family, just because I've dealt with them for such a long time in my previous capacity as Transportation Director in IU, and I know that they've always been upright and ethical and done what they wanted, you know, done it correctly, and apparently they're seeing some other people that aren't, so I just, I'm trying to give some time for their concerns to truly be heard.
And that would be accomplished if we don't waive second reading.
I think so, because it gives the rest of us-
Because we've approved this on first reading. Alderman Nemours.
And to add to that, I have hesitations too. I feel like every time we viewed this, new issues come up, and I recognize that our goal is to encourage competition, but I appreciate Alderman Fanouken speaking to the ethical nature of our resident who just spoke to this. So, you know, I'm concerned mostly about making sure that we're encouraging competition and making sure that we are paying attention to all of the other implications that come alongside with, you know, the recommendations. So it seems like there are a lot of things there that haven't been fully unpacked that I can't fully grasp the potential ramifications of.
Yeah, I, first of all, I don't know that anyone in this room has a higher regard for the Lovett family than I do, but that, it isn't about a family, and it isn't about a particular tow, it's about what you want to address questions that have come to you. So, I'm happy to put anything on the agenda, specific, general, so that we can have a productive discussion. I would like to hear from any of you who have substantive suggestions to make to this ordinance, and I'm happy to have a new ordinance written up between now and the next meeting, if you would like, or we can hold it over for another time. I think there was some sense of urgency about the general things that are in the ordinance now. We can either come back later or at a time specified by you. I'm happy to serve you, that's why I'm here, so, but please let me hear, because otherwise I have nothing to bring you, and that's why I said, why are we waiting if I don't have something?
Alderman Nemours.
So I think what I would love to see is, in regard to the, I'm looking at the email now, to the eight recommendations that were suggested, I would love to see the upside and the downside to all of them, because I don't fully get what could go wrong with them and what is right about them. So that's what I would like to understand better.
I think we might have a towing war right here next time, because we might have got three, how many licensed operators do we have now? Four, three?
Three, four.
Three?
I think it's three and almost four.
Almost four.
Yes.
So, we've got three or four different opinions right now, I can assure you of that. So, I guess say what you want, and then we'll deal with what you want.
And we respect that, City Manager Nicholas. Alderman Perkins.
So I'm doing this from memory, but there are three things that seem to jump out at me, and they all kind of focused more on, I guess, consumer protection type things. Having two in the same yard, I think that opens the can of worms of he said, she said type situation for vehicles damaged in possession of that yard. A little uneasy about that. Secondly, the size thing seems kind of logical to me, and the third one that I kind of grabbed onto was the thought of subcontracting something out to someone outside of the region. Chief seemed to support that, so I give that some credibility.
Okay. What was the second one, Alderman?
The minimum size.
Size of a lot?
The size of the capability of the tow vehicle coming to an accident scene.
The weight, weight, load?
Capacity.
Capacity.
Capacity, yeah. A tow truck capacity is what I heard of it.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure those are all big deals, but you asked for specifics, and those are the three that I really got my head around pretty quickly.
I was just trying to think, it does walk us into down a path where we're making some judgments, you know, some places have, they realize, if you get a one, like you see on TV, what is that, ice road, whatever, you get one of those rigs, you can do anything, right?
Right.
But we don't, most of the time, you need the smaller rig that can get into smaller places and yank a car and so forth. So you're talking now about requirements that to do business in the Kelb, you've got to have probably two different kinds of, you know, different capacities.
And there's a balance there, you know, you don't want to eliminate competition.
No, yeah. Well, we can look into and see what other communities do, I guess that's the best way to do it. Go on a listserv and see are there criteria that define for a community of our size, the best capacities. Thank you.
Alderman Verbic.
Is it the tow yard owner somewhat penalizing themselves if the size isn't large enough? In other words, they're limiting their capacity, so they're limiting the amount of business that they can really do. Also, if they don't have the appropriate equipment, then they won't get the work, so, you know, again, those companies that see that work as being valuable, they'll ramp up their capabilities, and so I don't know that I would say that all companies must have the same equipment and same capacity, but I would say that those that don't just simply don't get the work.
Alderman Nemours.
What Alderman Verbic said, I absolutely makes perfect sense, and, you know, let the free market rule it. I think what I'm confused about is, or what I'm having trouble deciding on are the implications of sharing a lot with another tow company. I think, you know, it could help encourage competition if a company wants to allow another company on their site, but, you know, it seems like there are natural reasons that one would not want to do that. I also, I guess I don't want to see us adding more towing companies and saying, oh, you know, each towing company needs a huge lot, and we're going to have all these tow lots all over town taking up valuable space and have them all be, you know, 50% vacant, so,
Alderman Verbic.
Because Rockford has one, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong, you know, that the city that size, they're operating with one tow company, so it would be good to have that information, pros and cons, fair competition.
I don't know, I'll be honest with you, I don't know why I'm going to bring this back to you, it's not, because I'm reluctant, it's just, I don't know, I don't know how we do this. You know, fighting COVID, we're trying to be attentive and responsive to the people who want to make this a better place to live. We just moved, we got a budget to put together, and now we're going to become experts in towing. If it's all right, I'd like to, nobody's objecting to what you have here, right? We solved a problem. I would recommend that you approve this, and you say at some point, we bring back, we've got a month or two, we do, this can take some time, if, otherwise, we're going to be chasing a new idea every time we come in here. I would just like us, if it's possible, to give us a little bit of staff time to do this right. Just to get to this point, we talked to King County and the Page County, and so you've got, you know, four or five communities is what we were relying on, and we backed up because a lot of them are allowing the two per lot, but they say they police it, they watch it to see. I think those are all legitimate concerns, but some of it's in the policing, some of it's in the ordinance.
Yeah, I think based on the fact that we were here May 11th, we looked at a ordinance, we looked at some potential amendments or areas of concern that could be amendments. City Manager Nicholas and staff brought this back. I would hardly recommend that we have a motion to waive second reading and approve this, keeping in mind that if we do that, then we've got something on the books amended, but we could then bring it back and talk about more specific points. If we don't do that, what we're asking City Manager Nicholas to do is to come back with a potpourri of discussion items tonight, and so we would be amending what we had passed on first reading. Those are my two cents.
Mr. Mayor, in order to move things along, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we waive second reading and approve. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken and seconded, excuse me, it's been moved by Alderman Fanouken and seconded by Alderman Verbic that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
That ordinance is approved as presented. Thank you, Council, for your discussion and your dialogue in this this evening. Let's move along, number three, ordinance 2020-041, approving a rezoning from CBD Central Business District to PDC Plan Development Commercial District, and approving a preliminary and final development plan to allow for a building contractor's office and material storage at 421 Grove Street by Krista and Matt Gerke. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. There's some considerable background here on what the Gerkes would like to do. This comes to you after a good discussion at the plan commission level, some considerable time with our principal planner, Dan Olson. The Gerkes are intent on moving a well-established, decades-old, family-owned business from Sycamore to the Kelb. Their intention is to expand their business and to do it here, and to do it on a property that has been underutilized and periodically vacant since 2003. It's a near neighbor to this building, right across the street, and the proposal is to enhance the appearance of it. There was, because this is a general contractor's shop area, office area, and also the area where employees show up in the morning, pick up trucks and equipment and so forth, there was an interest in enclosing a spot toward the back of the building and on one side where some things could be stacked. This is not an area where you dump truckloads of gravel and so forth, but where you might stack some lumber for the day, the next day, the brick, whatever it is. And there are some pictures you can see here, that yellow highlighted area is where the fence would go, so give you orientation, it's north is up, and the intent here is to serve the general public who would drive into a very large parking area. It used to be a show area for vehicles when it was a car lot, and also to enhance the appearance of that large sea of asphalt with more vegetation and landscaping, the upgrading of the yard lights that light the parking area and so forth. Also, there's over $500,000 of personal investment that would be going into this to make the, it needs a new roof, and it needs work inside, heating, air conditioning, electrical, and so forth, to bring it up to today's standards. So, this is a very serious intention and a project that hangs on two things. One is, the first item is before you tonight, the ordinance, which touches only on the change in the zoning and other related aspects of final plan and so forth. And then another item, which we will get to after the council, which I hope will take some action on this zoning part, would need to consider in terms of whether you want to provide an incentive or not. So I'll stop there. You have some background to work from, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, description of the property and what the Gerkes plan to do with this. Any further discussion? Alderman Verbic.
So, as zoned, you know, we, the neighbors are, you know, we've got some residential neighbors kitty corner and some other commercials, commercial owners next door. My concern is changing the zoning, kind of changing the deal on the neighbors. So the neighbors bought in, this was the deal. I'd be interested in how much traffic could be generated, and two, what could be the impacts on this particular property. So with this property right across the street, again, it's the unknown about what could happen here, but I wouldn't want to get in the way of what could happen here by changing zoning on something else, is my concern.
Mm-hmm. And a very legitimate concern and, uh, it was a topic that was discussed at the Plan Commission meeting as well. Uh, actually the, the concern wasn't so much the traffic. There, there was an open question, how much tra- traffic will this generate? It's basically people showing up in the morning and then coming home at night. It's not an in and out as, as it was for many years. Uh, but, uh, the, the concern that people had was, uh, was outside storage and this is the one reason for the, the zoning, uh, proposed zoning change. Uh, and so people really wanted to get down into detail on that and it, it is detailed in your background and also, uh, it occupied the attention of the Plan Commission. They were satisfied after hearing the explanations and we do have a track record with the company. Uh, we know about where they are in Sycamore. We know that they're in a, amongst houses in, in Sycamore, uh, not the same urban layout here, but, uh, people drive by every day, don't even know they're there. So, uh, we know something about their housing. Of course, once you make a change like this, a zoning change, it goes with the land. This is a very good operator and a fine family business and, uh, 30 years from now, uh, what would it be like? We're stewards of, of all the, the downtown possibilities. Uh, we do know that, uh, and the former owner and brokers for this property are here in the audience tonight. We do know that it's been a long time. It's been 17 years since this has been fully occupied and operating, uh, as, as it has the capacity in terms of size and, and area and according to the commercial requirements of the Central Business District. So what we were, what we were faced with was not what it said or what we're trying to waive, but what it didn't say. And so now you're sort of making new laws, starting in a new direction. And as you say, you can decide, I don't think this is the direction we want to go, but, uh, we, we do allow other things that in terms of, uh, of the zoning of the downtown are anomalies today, but so they, they, they also showed up and wanted to know what's happening, what's going to be in the neighborhood here. And ultimately they left the Plan Commission meeting saying, welcome to the neighborhood. So, uh, we've, we recommended at the staff level, we had the same concerns going in. Uh, this is not the first interested party that we've wa- worked with on this. Uh, I, I, I give credit to the brokers for, for challenging us to try to come up with something that we would accept and that's why it's before you tonight.
And to use your terminology too, Bill, I think, welcome to the neighborhood. I think a couple of the neighbors who were at the Planning and Zoning Commission used that, those exact words at the Planning and Zoning, welcome to the neighborhood. And I think their primary, their prime, they were primarily interested in what the traffic would do in this neighborhood. I don't know if they were really addressing your second point, Alderman Verbic, but, uh, and I think this got a unanimous, uh, recommendation, did it not, from P and Z?
It did.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? Alderman Perkins.
Looking in the backup, there was two different types of fence that I saw. Can we get some clarity on?
Yeah, that's, that's the one.
That's the one. Okay.
There was another one that looked pretty industrial.
Right, exactly. So, so that'll be around where the yellow line is.
And then there will be, uh, plantings also, uh, on the curbside. So it won't stand out quite as much, the large expanse of the metal.
Yeah, because that fence looked a lot nicer than the?
Yeah, yeah.
Than the other one.
So you would see that on, in a short distance on Fifth and a little bit in that alley?
And there was, so I, there was actually a third possibility, which was the cyclone fence with the slats in it. And we know what happens over time. The slats get broken and, and it, it's an eyesore and we have some of those around town, unfortunately.
Okay. Alderman Ver- Favor.
So I, I can't remember if this came up in the Planning and Zoning Commission or not. Do you recall if, um, like a semi-truck deliveries or, um, what kind of deliveries and things like that are going to be?
Most of their, and, and the Gerkeys are here and can speak to that, but most of their deliveries, they, they do a lot of big projects and, uh, they're commercial contractors and work in schools, work in businesses, uh, work in institutional settings like this. Uh, they deliver to the site. They're going to deliver materials to the site and so forth, but cleaning up a job or setting up a small job, uh, to fill in, uh, they might need something, but they generally go and get it, although it's not beyond the realm of possibility they get a smaller stake truck or something like that come in. Um, but I believe that's the approach.
Okay. And I, and I know the fence, obviously there for, you know, kind of a visual barrier and that was also one of my concerns was there's not going to be anything. I, I saw in the backup, nothing would be stacked higher than eight feet. So it wouldn't be necessarily visible over the fence. And, and again, that was one of my concerns, but it, it looks like a nice fence and I like how, you know, obviously from Grove it's going to be set back and the landscaping that they're planning and stuff, it actually looks pretty good.
Any further discussion? So what this, uh, ordinance and we have a, a motion and a second on it, this, it, does this merely address the rezoning?
Yes.
It does not address any consideration that may be brought forward?
But I thought in good, in good faith, the, the family is interested in spending a lot of money here and making a major investment. Is there, there are aspects of this that are very tefelable, eligible? It doesn't mean that we're, you're prepared to support a TIF, whether it's a forgivable loan, forgivable loan or whatever you want to call it, but, um, I, I thought it would be ingenuine for me to bring that forward and then come back and say, oh, by the way, so you're kind of gotcha-gimmied here. Uh, I didn't want to do that. If you don't feel that you can get behind the TIF project, what we're going to talk about as a second reether here, uh, then you've, I, I don't know that you support the rezoning, uh, but that's up to you.
Right now we're talking about the rezoning. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Alderman Favor?
It sounded like you were soliciting for a comment. So I would be supportive of your recommendation for the 159, 160.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanoukian?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Do we need a waiver of second reading on this? Would anybody care to do that?
Or no, uh, doing it first? Yeah, let's deal with the TIF first.
I beg your pardon?
We can deal with a TIF question first.
Okay.
And then, then bring it back. That's really the best thing to do.
Okay.
Shall I, um, move into that if the council's ready or since the vote has been taken on first reading?
Sure.
Okay. May I? Uh, this isn't quite the order we normally do. We normally have a consideration and we'll see what happens and we do that and then, and we do the rezoning and so forth, but both are keyly, uh, important here and, uh, are, uh, are conditions and the, uh, consideration of whether they want to buy or, or not. And, uh, so I, I've done some homework for you to review. Uh, the proposal formally was, was submitted to us just a couple of weeks ago. Uh, I, we, and just a couple of weeks ago, we spent a fair amount of time talking about how we're going to operate our TIF program going forward. And I was trying very hard to keep within, well within the rails that we've laid out. Uh, and I, I, I hope you find that's the case. I, I played out the, the, uh, likely budget now, uh, as we're looking forward to the end of at least this year and also through next year. And, uh, very mindful of grinding future proposals. We just got our TIF, uh, forensic TIF audit back. So I, if anything, I've calculated this in the most conservative fashion. We're, we're looking at already receiving increment from this property. And what I'm basically saying is without any further improvements, this increment will continue to go at a certain pace. And with the improvements, including all the improvements that private money will, will, uh, underwrite, uh, here's the increment. So it's a pretty narrow, uh, calculation and it comes to that number which I propose to you. Not, not more and not less. I think it's a conservative number. I think they will exceed that. I think the value of the property will go up. I think there's also room on that property for another commercial office operation, uh, to the west side of the property at some point. And still have more than adequate parking there, but whatever happens to ensue, if nothing else happens but the relocation of this business, um, I've, after consulting with, uh, our city engineer, Zach Gill, and others to look at what we're going to actually need, uh, it, it was apparent that we could, uh, reduce the allocation that you've previously supported toward the Route 38 downtown for, just for this year, not for next year by about 150,000 and still have more than enough, any eventuality, whatever we'd find on the design side for the balance of this year. So that's where I came up with the money. Otherwise we're looking at 95,259. So we added 150 on there. That's how we came up with the amount.
So I take it we're rolling the, uh, the thoughts of council on the consideration of the forgivable TIF loan, 20-year term, amount of 159,920. We're rolling that into, uh?
Even at this point, obviously we don't have an agreement before you had TIF agreement, but if there was a consensus here?
If there was, so we're looking for consensus and then, and then perhaps we can go back and see if we want to have a second meeting on the?
Yeah. In, in the world of real estate transactions, they can't close unless they have an answer to where you are on this or a likelihood in, in good faith.
That makes sense. Okay. Uh, is there consensus that the TIF loan, 20-year term, 159,920 makes sense so that it can be brought back as a TIF consideration on which we vote? I see thumbs up and shaking hands, heads. So Bill, you have that consensus?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now, would it be helpful if we waived second reading on number three now on the rezoning? Can we do that before?
Yeah, it just makes a deal. Should I bring that back? Yeah, I think. Let's bring them both back at the next meeting.
Okay, very good. So that ordinance is approved on first reading tonight. We'll bring you a?
We'll bring you a?
Is that fairly clear? City Manager Nicholas?
It is, thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Let's move a little bit along then. Number four, I believe. That was three, was it not? Yes. Number four, ordinance 2020 dash zero four two approving a rezoning from the GC General Commercial District to the PDC Plan Development Commercial District and approving a preliminary and final development plan to accommodate a four-story Executive Suites Residential Complex with 59 dwelling units and ground level commercial space with a banquet conference room at 2675 Sycamore Road. That's 2675 Sycamore Road Development LLC, Isaac Suites. I'd entertain a motion, please. So moved?
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the petitioner is a limited liability corporation that is represented tonight by Mr. John Pappas, who's in the audience tonight and, um, would be happy to answer any questions you may have after I give a brief presentation. Uh, this is also a project which was before our Plan Commission.
Mm-hmm.
Last week. It, uh, is, is unique. Uh, there is no, by the way, there is no incentive requested here and there's no incentive program that would, would touch this particular geography. There's a considerable background, uh, in your, uh, packet tonight and I've just summarized that at, at some length. Uh, the applicant is, is proposing a rezoning to allow for a special use and also for a building height, uh, allowance that would allow for four stories. He's proposing to, on this site, which is just under three acres, to, to construct a, a unique, uh, uh, executive suite arrangement, uh, for leases that, uh, are, you know, four to seven months or so. And Mr. Pappas can talk to you about why he thinks there's a market for this. And he certainly has been successful in the rental market here in our community in, in recent years. And, uh, the, the project has been well-vetted by the neighborhood. Uh, owners of the townhouse development, uh, next door, uh, at the rear of this property, uh, off of Oakland, uh, have been very engaged in this process and, uh, any concerns about, uh, drainage and, and there was a, a slough area that was fouled with a lot of underbrush and so forth. A lot of that's not only been cleaned out, but also been identified for, for new landscaping when the, if the project is, uh, approved and if, if it unfolds. So, uh, also the, the city has, uh, been working with the developer on, uh, improving the water quality in that area. We have a dead-end main. It used to be the end of DeKalb, but now it's, you know, it's almost the end of DeKalb. But, uh, uh, that, uh, would involve about 135 feet of additional water main to make a loop connection and that will improve the quality of the water for the townhouse development and also for the people who would be staying at this, uh, extended, uh, stay area. So, uh, there's an allowance for more than what is required in the way of parking spaces. There, uh, would be, uh, equal-sized, uh, handicap-accessible, uh, units on the, uh, first floor, ground level and, uh, some commercial, uh, uh, not commercial, but there, yeah, there would be commercial on the ground level as well and, and amenities. So at the, at this point, I'll just say the Plan Commission voted, uh, five to zero in, in favor of this and the zoning amendments, uh, the, uh, the plan and the standards and also the comments that were attached to your packet tonight. We support their recommendation.
Any further discussion on this? Alderman Smith?
Bill, this doesn't have any bigger footprint than the old, was it a two-story hotel?
Uh, yeah, a little different footprint, yeah. Yeah. But it still sits squarely in that elevated part of the lot and, uh, there's plenty of space around it. It's not dwar- you know, it's not going road to road and, yeah.
Thank you. Anything else? Roll call. Nope. Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanoukian?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Do we want to waive second reading on this?
I'll make a motion that we waive second reading and approve.
Second? It's been moved by Alderman Fanoukian, seconded by Alderman Smith that we waive second reading and pass this ordinance. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanoukian?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Another great project for the city of DeKalb. Yeah, it's great. Okay. Uh, we now move to item M on the agenda, reports and communications. This allows each and every one of our council members to, uh, say anything they'd like and report on anything they'd like. Alderman Morris, first ward.
Uh, I just want to acknowledge the agony that our community is experiencing. I want to acknowledge the protesters and thank them for their diligence in drawing our attention to, um, to injustice. So that's all.
Thank you, Carolyn. Alderman Fanoukian.
I, I also would like to support the protesters' First Amendment rights to go ahead and make peaceful protest. Uh, the, um, death of George Floyd in Minneapolis was horrendous and that still does not give The death of George Floyd in Minneapolis was horrendous, and that still does not give any cause for the looting that not only occurred here but across the country. And somehow, we need to be able to tread that fine line in between the two of allowing the protest but hopefully suppressing any criminal behavior that might follow. And that's not to tie the protesters to the criminal behavior. I believe that was a completely separate group.
Thank you, Alderman Fanouken. Alderman Smith?
No report.
Alderman Perkins?
No report.
Alderman McAdams?
I just want to remind everyone of the Human Relations Commission meeting on the 16th. Please tune in, and please give us your voice and your suggestions.
Alderman Verbic, seventh, excuse me, Alderman Verbic, sixth ward.
No report.
Alderman Favor, seventh ward.
No report.
What a couple of weeks it's been since the council last met. And who knows? And this may, and I stress, may be the last time we meet in these city council chambers. As most of you know by now, we will be holding our council sessions at the DeKalb Public Library in hope that by our June 22 meeting, the room is ready, along with the studio equipment necessary to provide a broadcast of the proceedings. These council chambers hold a myriad of memories since this building was constructed in 1968. This gavel has been pounded by Mayors Ebbison, Chamberlain, Van Patter, King, Baresi, Sparrow, Chronopoulos, Van Buur, Paulson, Ray, and Smith. It once housed our city's police department and nearly 100 employees. But its time ran out with changes in technology and changes in the sheer number of people needed, or needing the building's volume of space. This council decided about a year ago, in concert with the DeKalb Park District, to purchase the old First National Bank structure at Second and Lincoln Highway. Today, the old became new again as we initiated operations over there. Thanks to so many of our staff, through the leadership of Facility Superintendent Andy Rye, who worked along with so many of our staff members over the weekend to make that possible. We hope that our residents take the time to visit us, 164 East Lincoln Highway. Executive Assistant Scott, any items?
No, sir. Thank you.
City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. Talked to Larry Apperson, the Chair of the Human Relations Commission, this morning, and we're going to try in the next couple of days to figure out a way to maximize participation in the HRC meeting, and whether it's digitally or however it is, or a combination of things. And because the time is approaching to send the public notice out, it'll be no later than, say, midday on Friday, and we'll do a press release to let people know how to participate, where or by what medium we're going to invite opinion. And then maybe also in that release, a clearer definition of what we're hoping to accomplish in that meeting, which is not to solve all our problems, but to let people speak, not unlike a Zoom conference call, a couple hundred people that the county put on last week. It's the second meeting that we're, of the month, that we're identifying where we are with the hospitality revenues. And I just want to let you know, we just got our, we didn't get it, but we saw it posted on a state site, our March sales tax numbers, so we got a little bit of COVID there. It's, I wouldn't say that April will be anything like this. April will be a lot worse probably, but home rule tax is down about 19% and the state 1% tax is down about 12% when compared with March of the previous year of 2019. So, we projected about a 20% decline for both categories in March. We fared a little bit better, but I'm not going to say we're going to be better. And we're incurring costs too right now, trying to do the right thing, and that's also wasn't calculated back in March. So, I'll keep you informed. That's it. And, oh, the new building. So, I wish COVID kind of interrupted. We had plans for a grand opening and, you know, the community come on in and see it before we fill it with tables and chairs and file cabinets and all the rest of that. That wasn't possible. We're in there now, the doors are open, and people are invited and required, in fact, to wear masks when they come in. But three people came up and just appeared in my office today. One of them had worked in there when it was a bank. And said, "You've done a lot to improve those bathrooms." And we know what they looked like, so I'm glad to hear that. But most people thought a constructive reuse of a historic building like that was the right thing to do, so I just thought I'd pass that one on.
We've been asked to consider recessing into executive session, and I would entertain a motion to hold an executive session to, on a two-pronged item, approval to hold an executive session in order to discuss, number one, pending or immediate litigation as provided for in five, ILCS 120/2C11, and number two, executive session minutes as provided, to discuss executive session minutes as provided for in five, ILCS 20/2C21. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken and seconded by Alderman Verbic that we recess into executive session. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
This regular meeting of the city council is now in recess. Thank you.